I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 7:00 for Thursday, May 16, 2019. Start with a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Tonight at 7:30, we're going to have a town meeting. So at that time, we'll recess the Board of Selectmen meeting, have the town meeting, and then we'll reconvene the Board of Selectmen meeting. Okay. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda? Steve?
I see here, under finished business, we don't have the dog pound on here.
It's true.
I think we need to tie that up tonight, finish it off.
Well, I think it is finished.
Huh? We're just waiting for a contract. Huh? Just waiting for the contract.
We voted yes on it.
I know, but from what I understand, Jason wanted to know about the fees.
The administrative.
The administrative fees.
I sent you an email on that.
I didn't get it charged. I mean, not handy.
Yeah, it's, there is no fee.
Right, they said they hadn't charged any fees.
For ever.
Right, forever.
Yeah.
I know, I knew that. All right, so that's a done deal?
Done, that's why I took it off.
Okay, well, I didn't get the, any emails or anything like that.
It went to your desk, you wanted it to work.
Right, I didn't get it. Okay, I apologize. Good, good, done deal. Good.
Okay, so any further discussion on the agenda? I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Going on to attendance, Jason's absent. Approval of meeting minutes. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 2, 2019.
Second?
Discussion?
Second.
Okay, is there any, any discussion?
I, I think that Steve already had it, but I was going to point out that I did talk to the Deputy Chief in South Windsor.
Yeah.
And he said there has never been a fee charged for administrative, an administrative fee charged for the regional dog care. So, other than that, I think the minutes are fine.
Okay. So I move to approve the regular minutes as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I move to approve the special meeting minutes of May 8, 2019. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Communication. I have some communication here. This is a letter from Len Norton, dedicated to Joe sitting in the corner back there.
Len's supposed to be here. He has a handout for y'all.
Okay. "On behalf of the National American Public Works Association, I respectfully request the Town of East Windsor officially recognize National Public Works Week, May 19 through 25, 2019. Since 1960, the APWA has sponsored Public Works Week. This is an annual observance which takes place during the third week, full week of May, is designated to educate communities and their leaders on the importance of our nation's public infrastructure and public work services. The National Public Works Week also serves as a time to recognize the contributions of public works professionals who design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, sewage, refuse disposal, parks, open space, and provide the protection of our environment. The demands of our changing world require these employees to be available first for sponsors in event of any type of emergency. Therefore, we believe it is important for our community to honor those who devote their lives to its service. This year, we again will be participating in the Public Works Department from across New England in the second annual Philly Public Works Truck Food Drive to support the local food bank. Thank you for your consideration, Len Norton." And on the agenda, we do have a proclamation we're going to approve. That's the correspondence. Any further correspondence? Okay. Going on to item number nine, the casino?
Do we want some public participation?
I think we should. Public participation, sorry. Is there any public participation? Okay. Last chance, go on once. All right, so then we're going to talk about the casino. I did talk with David Capiello today, called him up, or he called me. And just to get an update, and not really, a lot's happening. What he says is that they're moving forward, and what the tribal nations, what the MMCT is doing is lining up financing. So they're talking to banks and other people that would finance the construction. And that, they said it would take probably three months to get the financing in place, and then they'd start building. That's, that's what I understood today. Any discussion about that?
I've heard, I guess read, that Governor Lamont is really anxious to put a casino in Bridgeport. The big carrot out there is this sports betting, that the Indian nations would like to have, go to them on a sole source basis. And I'm wondering whether there is anything in the background that we don't know about that is happening that might affect our casino.
That, that's a very good question. I've heard the same rumors, so to speak, but.
That's all it is, is rumors.
I have no verification. I reported what David Capiello said, so he, he's the spokesman for them, so they're not willing to say anything in that line. Although he did say the governor's not negotiating right now, so I don't know what that means, but.
Well, I read an article, probably two weeks ago, that said that the governor had said that the sports betting is not on the table for, for this session.
Mm-hmm.
And that may be what that means. But that's a very large carrot hung out there. Probably more income from that by an order of magnitude than a casino like the one they want to build here.
True.
I guess I worry about things like that.
It's a valid worry, but, yeah.
I saw somewhere, you know, the area towns here are getting $750,000 each for impact. But I also saw that Bridgeport and other cities around are getting this money. I saw that.
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't understand why they are giving these other cities this money when they're so far away from us. There's no impact to them down there. You know, there's, I don't know. I don't know what's going on. I saw that they're paying out a lot more than just right around here.
Right.
That's true, that, that in fact is happening. They're paying cities that are remote from East Windsor?
Yeah, I think they call, I'm not sure what they call them, but Cities in Need or something like that. Bridgeport comes to mind, New Haven comes to mind, and there were a couple others too that I can't remember.
Hartford's getting some money too.
Yes, Hartford.
Hartford's getting money too.
Originally, there was just a short list of towns that were, yeah, that were right in this vicinity.
The four towns right around East Windsor that were.
Excuse me. Public participation's over. You were talking to him, across the room.
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay. Further discussion on the casino?
When I'm talking with Dr. Ann Warner, Senator, he did say that the governor is more inclined to have it in Bridgeport than here. I say it gently, but my understanding is that his staff is not of that same feeling. So there's a number of people there that are more inclined to have it here. And that's all I know, what I heard.
I think my feeling from the past was that the tribal nations or MMCT was saying, we'll consider, or Bridgeport, we'll talk about Bridgeport, but first, it's East Windsor, let's get that done. So you're right, there's a lot of balls in motion, things in play. Okay, well, we move on to the next, which is Hartford Foundation's Greater Together Community Fund. And I just wanted to give a quick report on that. The Hartford Foundation for Public Giving is comprised of 29 towns, and Deb Talami brought this to my attention, that they're going to give away $100,000 to each town. And of course, you have to apply for it. It's going to be $50,000 lump sum, plus then, after that, they put $50,000 in a annuity-type thing, and you'd get 5% a year thereafter. So I called and talked to Megan Burke there today to see how things were progressing, and she said their next step is to get all the leaders of these towns together and figure out how they're going to distribute the funds and what they're going to do. So she said, be patient, and probably it'll be a couple months before that occurs. And we'll have to, at some point, put together an advisory committee to recommend what project, or what we should spend this money on, and how it should be handled, but.
Are there guidelines for that?
I asked her, is there anything we could do now? And she said, no, wait, wait till we get all the regional leaders together and decide what we're going to do.
Typically, what would you spend it on?
Well, actually, it says, if you go on their website, it says, "The purpose of the Greater Together Community Fund is to support the community in taking ownership around the needs of their towns, encourage broad and inclusive civic engagement, and anchor the Hartford Foundation and its town." So, pretty general. But they wanted community involvement, so it would be something to get the community involved. So. Okay. Going on to new business, number 10. In your package, there was a letter from the East Windsor Housing Authority. It kind of looks like this. And what they're asking for in this letter is to decrease the pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes. Now they're paying 7%, they'd like to reduce it to 5, and do that for the next four years. And a little background, and actually, I also, and I'll pass it out, have a letter that I was thinking of writing this year, and it's very similar to the one that we've written for the last few years. And I'll pass it down. And it kind of explains in here the background of how we got to this point. And apparently, in, well, from 1991 to 2013, and Lynda, you can, if you want to say something, you can fill in things here too, or Marie. From 1991 through 2013, they were paying 10% as a pilot, and they ran into some financial problems. And they, because of that, they, we reduced the amount of payment the town did, this was before I took office, to 7%. And what the town did then was say, they'll remain 7%, and we'll kind of look at it each year, and we really want to understand the finances of the, the East Windsor Housing Authority. And unfortunately, in the last few years, we had, we went, the town went without a treasurer for two years, and our treasurer now is getting her feet on the ground, and we'll be in a position to look at that financial stuff. But before we commit to five years, or four years and 5%, I think we should look at that. So I'm suggesting that we keep it at 7% for one more year, and take the time to really understand their finances. And so that's what I'm suggesting we do. We just do the same thing we did last year, basically. And I'll read this letter, because it kind of says that. It says, and this is very similar to last year's letter, because it, it also says the letters, that if we don't come to an agreement, and how we're going to do it on July 1st, then it's going to jump back up to 10%. So that's encouragement to, to, well, I'll read the letter. Says, "I am writing this to confirm our agreement pertaining to the East Windsor Housing Authority's payment in lieu of taxes, pilot, assessments, and charges. As you are aware, the housing authority was paying 10% pilot program payment each year since at least 1991 through 2013. While the 10% payment was made for some time because the housing authority was undergoing severe financial strain and economic difficulties, the town agreed to reduce the pilot payment to several percent through June 30, 2019. It was also agreed extent that the town and the housing authority did not agree to a new pilot program rate as of July 1, 2019, then the rate would revert to 10%. The pilot agreement for the period July 1, 2019 through July 30, 2020 will be as follows: The pilot program payment rate commencing July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020 will be 7% as calculated last year. This, to extend this 7% rate or reduce the rate after the June 30, 2020, additional, additional finance information must be provided to the town, including bank statements from all housing authority bank accounts, and additional financial controls may be required by the treasurer. To the extent that the town and the East Windsor Housing Authority do not agree to a new pilot program rate as of July 1, 2020, then the rate will revert to 10%. If the housing authority agrees to this pilot program from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, please indicate the authority's agreement by signing the authorities, on the authority's behalf below." I'll sign it, and is John Burnham still the?
Chair.
Chair? So he signs it, and so we'll have our agreement in place. So that's what we're planning to do.
Okay, I just wanted to say something about the letter that I wrote.
Yeah, there's a, sure.
And the reason why we're requesting the reduction is because the state has eliminated some of the grant money that we've been able to access over the years.
It was grant money, not subsidy?
Correct, we are not subsidized, unfortunately. So we do rely on the rents of the residents for all of our income. We don't receive any other income. So the decrease would help us at this important time. And the grant money that we were receiving, yes, we were able to do some upgrades, but more importantly, we were able to do some very, very important repairs. Now, the money that we receive as income, we will have to put more that aside to plan on any emergency situations, instead of applying for grant money that has been readily accessible in the past. So I just wanted to clarify why we are asking for that reduction now and not.
As you see, has that grant money gone away forever?
At least, I don't know what the state will be doing a year from now, but as of now, the critical needs funds that were available, we had replaced the sidewalks. And that was imminent because it was, they were a trypic hazard for our residents, as you know. And it's just a matter of time before we run into another situation where most likely we would have to do some sort of major repair. The complex was built starting from the 60s, and then 70s and 80s, and the different phases. So we are going to be faced with, we just, because of the age of the property, then most likely we'll have further repairs. So it's not because we want to plan on a swimming pool, or sauna, or bath course, you know, these are major, major considerations.
Recently, I thought someone had said that you were doing bathroom renovations and doing all that. Is that correct?
Bath and showers.
Showers?
Yes.
Okay.
We applied for the small cities grant, I'm sorry. And we did our presentation a couple of months ago for the application and your support.
Right.
So that application has been submitted. And we're not going to hear back from the state whether we will be receiving those funds or not until September or October.
Okay, so that hasn't started, then?
Correct.
Okay. Now, do you know if, you know, the stopping of the monies you were getting, is it the same in other towns, or there's something unique about us that made it happen here, not elsewhere?
Oh, this is statewide.
Yeah, somewhere.
More housing authorities.
Okay.
And the state, the small state housing authorities, like Park Hill, we, none of them receive subsidies. So we're all in a very similar situation.
And the grants had to be written for, you had to write for approval of your grant?
Yes, you have to submit an application, yes.
Was it a substantial amount of, of help?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
It was a big part of what you had for money?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And we're hoping that we will receive the small cities grant funds with the help of the town, thank you very much, because part of that application included a new group in all groups. And if you walk in there right now, we have a bucket in the hallway, because it's going to leak. And we're hoping that replacement of the roof will not have to come out of reserves. But that's something that we have to plan on, if we don't get the. And I also would like to say thank you to some of our residents that are here. Levarn is our attending commissioner, and another, Helen, for setting. And two people right here also, there is support and understanding, if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Paul?
I don't like to interfere with things, but we're talking about percentages, but us in the public have no sense of how many dollars may be involved.
I, I believe the pilot was about 26,000, was that about how much?
The current pilot is 24,948.85.
So the difference between, between seven and five would be what?
You haven't figured something else out?
Yeah, well.
Would be 7,128 less per year.
That's useful information.
That is.
We understand.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry.
Appreciate it, really, that was good question.
How long will it take Amy to sift through this?
I don't think we could get it done by June 30, to review all their financial information. If you, we could change the agreement to give them 5% for one year, want to do that?
How would you do that?
Yeah, but they're asking to stay at seven.
No, they're asking, they're asking to go to five, and they also wanted to do it for four years, but we could do it for one year, and then just keep the verbiage the same. So then, next June, or May, or hopefully, we'll do the financial analysis back in September, and we'll be ready for, to look to the future.
Have we talked to the treasurer about what, how long it'll take to do a financial analysis? Is it a big deal?
It's fairly significant. She's very busy now with the budget and everything, and she's on vacation right now, but I don't think we can do it in the month of June.
Well, I think we should do, do the one year until the stuff gets sifted through, and does it make sense, and then you continue it. So they're not being impaired now.
Okay, so you want to do it, you're saying 5% then?
Yeah.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
5% for one year, you're saying?
Yeah, until the financial gets sorted through. Yeah, if it gets sorted through, then in the next year, we'll just move it for another four. Does that make sense?
Oh, that's fantastic, thank you.
That would help.
It's a huge question.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll make a motion to allow the East Windsor Housing Authority to reduce the pilot to 7%, 5% for the upcoming fiscal year, 2019 to 2020, as authorized in the agreement, letter dated June 2019, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign the agreement.
Second?
All right. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 5%.
Thank you.
Okay. Good timing. So I'll make a motion to recess the Board of Selectmen meeting until, and will reconvene after the town meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a recording secretary? Is Kim here? Okay, I'll call this town meeting to order for May 16 at 7:30 p.m. First, first order of business is to elect a moderator.
I nominate Bill Stein as moderator. Sarah Muska, 25, may he allow him?
Second.
Okay, wait a minute, let's slow down. It's okay. So, Sarah Muska nominated Bill Stein. And Charlie?
Yep.
Mordell, second.
I'll nominate Bob Wainer, moderator.
And that's Bill Lowes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Steve's, you have one. Further nominations?
I'm moved, the nomination's closed.
Okay. Nominations are closed.
Second, Dick Fetham.
All right. First, Bill Stein. If you would like Bill Stein to be the moderator, please raise your hand. If you'd like me to be the moderator, raise your hand. Okay. Bill Stein, you're the moderator. This is your package, and here's the questions. We oftentimes pass these out by thirteen of us, so it's up to you, do you want to pass them out or leave it to yourself?
If you ask the town clerk to read the name... One second. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Okay.
Okay, I'll ask the town clerk to read the public notice.
Town of East Windsor, public town meeting notice. The legal holders of the town of East Windsor are hereby warned that a town meeting will be held at the town hall, 11 High Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, on Thursday, May 16, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. for the following. Item one, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education in the amount of $38,000 for IT equipment. Item two, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education in the amount of $77,000 for library and textbooks. Item three, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education in the amount of $38,500 for athletics and extracurriculars. Item four, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education in the amount of $27,500 for Broadbrook Elementary School Cafe child. Item five, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Police Department in the amount of $56,000 for vehicles. Item six, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Police Department in the amount of $23,100 for computers. Item seven, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $60,000 for vehicles, trucks. Item eight, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $20,000 for garage equipment. Item nine, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $50,000 for drainage. Item 10, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $50,000 for exterior lighting. Item 11, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of $26,000 for vehicles. Item 12, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of $97,000 for generators. And item 13, to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of $94,000 for South Rose. Dated at East Windsor, Connecticut, the 16th day of May, 2019, East Windsor Public Board of...
Okay, thank you. I'll just read the eligibility to vote. At any town meeting of a regular or special town election, or at any meeting of any fire, sewer, or school district, or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by, in any special act, any person who is the elector of such town may vote and any citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more who jointly is eligible to the town's district or subdivision for taxes assessed against them on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grand list of such town, district, or subdivision, who would be also liable, if not entitled, to an exemption under Connecticut General Statute Subdivision 17, 19, 22, 23, 25, 26 of Section 12-81, may vote unless restricted by the provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. That's a long sentence. Okay. And with that...
Tony Ward, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
It's very important the language be correct in all this. The legal notice that was posted is not what petition is. And according to our town charter, and I've printed copies for you here, according to town charter, town meeting by petition at said special town meeting, the only matters that may be considered shall be those set forth in said petition. Seeing our own petition, nothing in that legal notice is what was in the petition. Actually, it was, but it's not what the action item is. The action item in the petition is just this. To consider and approve, I'm sorry, to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of 657,100, as approved by the Board of Finance at a meeting on April 17, 2019. That's what the motion should read. We should be voting on the one item, not the list of items.
That's now what was noticed in the paper.
You're correct. And so, in order to follow the charter, the only items that you may address in this meeting, what this body will address in this meeting, is just this. The matters that may be considered shall be those matters set forth in the petition. There's only one action item in that petition, and that is to approve the appropriation.
Your name, sir?
Robert Leach, 39 Church Street. The appropriate motion would be as I have written here. So, if you like the appropriate motion, these are copies of petition.
Yep.
And that's copies of the charter language right there. If we're not going to follow the language of the charter, then why are we here?
This that you gave, this is the petition here?
No, the petition is the one that's stamped received by the town clerk. What I have typed there for you is the proper motion that this body should be considering The Board of Selectmen does not hold privilege to change petition. The same language in that petition is written on each cylinder stage and the circulator page. Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Bill Lowes, Marrow Road. If the notice in the paper was not read, I think we should adjourn this meeting until the notice is printed and it's read.
Tony Ward?
Yes.
The fact that the appropriation being requested is 657,100, even though the items are detailed, does it not essentially amount to the same thing?
The dollar amount, I need to do the math, and that math is not, yes, it is on the top, I'm sorry.
And the reference in the petition is to vote on those items as approved by Board of Finance. And are the items listed on here as approved by the Board of Finance?
They are.
Because if that's the case, then I would think that the, that the motion before the town meeting is actually correct.
Just looking for sure.
Same thing.
One motion?
Still one vote. Is your intention to offer multiple votes or a single vote?
According to charter, the way it's presented to me, the section of the charter and the petition that is written, written, it would be one vote.
Right. Now, according to the advertisement for the town meeting, was it also not listed as a single vote?
It was listed as individual items.
Tony Ward?
Yes.
Keep that in mind, 145 High Street. The petition is to compel the Board of Selectmen to set the, set the town meeting. The Board of Selectmen had a, had a meeting where they considered all the individual items. The petition is to compel the town, the Board of Selectmen, to set the town meetings to hold on the light of this concept of being able to, the petition be able to make up its own decision, is really not accurate. It's the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance referral that's supposed to send it out for a town meeting. The Board of Selectmen sent it out for, they delayed on sending it out. The petition compels the Board of Selectmen to send it out. The Board of Selectmen sent it out and had a notice in the paper. So, you know, the idea that, that a special appropriation of 600,000 plus one vote, I don't understand that. Even though it would take some time, members, people that are here at the town meeting should have the right, the ability to weigh in on the individual item. Now, it may not be an issue, but there's 20, no, how many items? There's 139 on here. Why would the town meeting be denied what the Board of Selectmen was intending to do with this, and sending items out? And they were not referred from the Board of Finance to the Board of Selectmen as one item, that were referred from Board of Finance to Board of Selectmen as 13 items. And I think that, that this is, the petition just forces the Board of Selectmen to set the town meeting as soon to the charter.
I have a question in regards to this point of, all the point of orders that are going on, which has the greater weight, the petition or the notice? Because that should be the deciding factor. And based on what you see there in the charter, it appears to me as though the petition has the greater weight, if you follow my logic. That's my question with my thought process, but, you know...
I think that if you vote once and vote for appropriation, supplemental appropriation of 657,000, that could be subject to legal action. So, I, why?
Yeah, why?
Somebody could challenge it. We're discussing it right now.
You could challenge it the other way, too.
Yes, perhaps they could.
Denise... Um, thank you. Just for a little bit of clarification from one of the speakers that spoke about the last Board of Selectmen meeting prior to the petition being signed, the reason petition was put together and signed is because the Board of Selectmen didn't discuss at that meeting. So, the petition went through, was signed that evening, to force it to come to a town meeting, so this way the town, town could vote. I personally don't care one way or the other, I think there's, you know, it'll be what it is. But, just for clarification, that's why the petition was...
Suggestion?
Yes.
You might hold a vote on the total amount? And then hold individual votes to ensure that you're legally covered?
I agree with Bill Lowes. Steve Dearborn, 144, he's still a trucker. I agree with Bill Lowes. If it wasn't printed, he noticed in the paper correctly, this should postpone for the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, and then we'll take care of this.
I believe that's just a ploy to further...
There's also, Dick Fetham, 37, we're over. There's also, with the findings petition, by the charter, this matter has to be to town meeting in so many days. And I don't have my charter with me, but if you wait till the next selectmen's meeting, maybe it's too far. I'll walk it up, it's in.
14 days.
14 days. 14 days old. That's from the time the town clerk stamps it. So, I don't think you even got time enough to follow it.
I'm going to give my interpretation of reading the charter and what was pretended in the petition. It said, "Any special town meeting, only the matters that may be considered shall be those matters set forth in petitions." In the petition, it does list the items individually, but it's listed as one motion. So, they are listed individually and as one motion. So, I don't know if we have to vote on it, but I guess my call would be that we vote individually on the items and as, and at the end, make one motion to cover everything. And let's, let's vote individually first and then make one at the end and see what happens. Unless... Can we do it the other way around?
No. Okay.
Any other? Just at the Board of Selectmen meeting, last one, another one, question that was, where they talked about these issues. The only thing that came up on the Board of Selectmen that they had issued was the 27,000, 27,500, I think it is? Yeah, for the replacement of the tiles in the five block cafeteria. And it was commented that they might be able to just put individual tiles around because the tiles don't carry the asbestos. But they have in there because they don't, they're not sure whether or not there's asbestos. But it's not necessarily the tile that carries this asbestos, it's the cement that's used that carries the asbestos. So, just because the tile might not pack asbestos in it, others should. So, I think with that, I don't think there'd be much of an issue.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Any town meeting can be adjourned? Is that a motion?
We've all heard enough, once voted and everything else. I'm of the opinion that you were duly elected the moderator, and I'm going to suggest that we take your advice and start the number one now. Bob White, Amy Rice, I'm sorry.
It's not a question, it's, it was just a... All right, I will read the first motion, and the motion is to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education of $38,000 for IT equipment. Do you have a motion for this?
So hold.
Second.
Who made the motion first?
Catherine Sineal.
Second.
Mrs. Suss, 10th and Rice Road.
Mrs. Suss, 10th and Rice Road.
For discussion? Just at the Board of Selectmen meeting, last one, another one, question that it was, where they talked about these issues. The only thing that came up on the Board of stuff that they had issued was the $27,000, um, $27,500 it is? Yeah, for the replacement of the tiles in the five-foot cafeteria. And it was commented that they might be able to just put individual tiles around because the tiles don't carry the asbestos. But they have in there because they don't, they're not sure whether or not there's asbestos. But it's not necessarily the tile that carries this asbestos, it's the cement that's used that carries the asbestos. So, just because the tile might not pack asbestos in it, others should. So, I think with that, um, I don't think there'd be much of an issue.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Any town meeting can be adjourned? Is that a motion?
We've all heard enough, once voted and everything else. I'm of the opinion that you were duly elected the moderator. And I'm gonna suggest that we take your advice and start the number one now. Bob White, Amy Rice Street, I'm sorry.
It's not a question, it's, it was just a... All right, I will, uh, read the first motion. And, uh, the motion is to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for Board of Education of $38,000 for IT equipment. Do you have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion first?
Kathy Villalure, 743.
Second. Another District Sust, 10th and Rice Road. District Sust, 10th and Rice Road.
For discussion?
One thing I think that people should realize, if you vote yes on all the items on this list, it's not gonna affect your taxes, either up or down or anything else. So, this money is already here, it's this year, it's not gonna affect any increases or decreases in your taxes. So, please take that under consideration when you want.
And I did have one thing I wanted to say, but I kinda got confused because of the way we started. I was ready for this. Um, I did put together something as a member of the Board of Finance just had mentioned. We are gathered here tonight to vote on items put forth by the Board of Finance in accordance with the fund balance policy. The policy states that the fund balance should be between 10% and 20%. Excess will be assigned by the recommendation of the Board of Finance forwarded to the Board of Selectmen into town meeting in accordance with town charter. Majority of the items presented to you tonight for your consideration were presented in detail to the Board of Selectmen by the CIP Capital Improvement Committee. These items were not funded in the budget capital improvement line that we are still voting on in referendum. Several items were identified during budget workshops and held by the Board of Finance and recommended to be put into this, what we're talking about tonight. So, that's how this came about, uh, because this, this money is in excess, it's already in the general fund, or, sorry, in the fund balance, and that's where this, this is, to get our fund balance in line with what our, our policy is. So, that's, that's where this came about, and thank you for making that point to us. Mr. Yageloff?
Yeah, Keith Yageloff, 145 Maple Street. First, I wanna say that I think that, um, most all these items are important and necessary for the town, and, and I personally support pretty much everything that's on this list. However, um, and I'm probably gonna be voting in favor of most of these items, and I appreciate the individual vote. But I wanna caution everybody against this idea of using special appropriations to fund items that are not in the budget. This is the second vote for special appropriation. The last one was $200,000. This is over $600,000, and is already a discussion about doing another special appropriation for a deficit of, I think we talked about over $600,000 from the Board of Education.
No.
I'm sorry, Rosie Mallon. Rosie Mallon.
$450,000.
360, okay. Yeah, correct, $360,000. So, that's 1.4, 1.7 million dollars, which represents 4% of the town budget. The problem is, is that this is not a wealthy community. This is, this is probably below average in terms of wealth for a community, and, and our fund balance is our savings account. And I liken it as people that use their savings account to start paying for their regular ongoing expenses. And you can't, you cannot sustain a household by using your savings account continually to pay for your regular ongoing expenses. You end up, you eventually have to cut back on what you're spending on to start setting some priorities and stay and live within your needs. So, I think that the issue is, is that we need to be careful. Tonight, it sounds, because these are all town items, these are all core items for the town. But, but I, I, I think that people need to be careful about using our savings account to pay for our ongoing expenses, because we are not a wealthy community. And so, the grantless increases, we will not have new tax dollars. And every year, we have wrote our fund balance without new tax dollars. So, I'm saying, let's be cautious and be smarter on this. Thank you.
Senator?
Um, Senator, so, 23 Lindsay Lane, Sheriff of Board of Finance. Savings, yes, but there is a fund balance policy, and we cannot carry over 20%. That's part of the fund balance. That is our savings, up to 20% is what we are supposed to save, recommended by the auditor. We have that, and we have more than that. And we have to deplete that, because that's how our rating happens. And when we're over, it's just as bad as being too far under. It shows that we're not putting money into our, our community. So, yes, we will never go under our fund balance policy. We like to keep it to the 20%, but when it's over, we do need to spend it. We can't afford it. We need to make it work for our community.
Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street, Broadbrook. The characterization of these items is very, very important. They all come under the same overview. These are not recurring items. That's why they're here. If they were recurring items, they wouldn't be here at all. These are one-time expenses to help solve problems and work out a financial issue. That's why we're trying to do this. It is good for the town in general, and these don't repeat or have additional expenses in the future. That's what you do with savings. You do intelligent investment in things that are for the good.
Move the question.
Second. Second.
Two-thirds of the party vote. Let's say it passes. Proceed the vote on item number one. Motion is to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education, the amount of $38,000 for IT equipment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, excuse me for just a minute. I believe you called that item one, and it's listed as item number 13.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, these are the actual motions. That is the list that was put together by...
I'm sorry.
...Board of Finance. So, you have to go by this, the list that was printed in the paper.
You're just gonna go backwards on the first...
I would like to ask you a question. Was it 38.5 or first?
I'm all set, we're going backwards.
The motion was made for $38,000.
Okay.
Senator, can we ask a question?
Yes.
It's because the motion was moved.
Yes. I have a question. When we do these appropriations, do they increase the base budget?
No.
No.
This is from the fund balance, and it's excess of 20% right now. Okay. Item number two, I will read the motion. To consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education, amount of $77,000 for library and textbooks. Do you have a motion?
Kate Carey-Trell, 28A Oakstone Grove, Broadbrook. I move the motion. Second.
Second.
Robert Slade, 77, the opposed group.
Okay, we're open for discussion? Discussion? Seeing none, proceed the vote. Item number two. To consider and approve the supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education in the amount of $77,000 for library and textbooks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three. To consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education, amount of $38,500 for athletics and extracurricular... Is there a motion?
So moved. Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue.
Second. Kathy Villalure, 343 Scannick Road.
Discussion?
Yeah, I gotta say, how, how, what's this, how can extracurricular be a one-time thing?
This is for equipment, for, I'll let you guys explain.
I'm sorry, but if that's not the one allowing...
This one was $38.500 for athletic equipment.
These are the, we're not going by the list we have right here.
This list is not in order.
This is the list that is published in the paper.
We're not going in the order of...
I understand.
Of this.
The legal notice.
Legal notice is what we're going by.
Oh, there's... There's just between 38 and 38.5.
$38,000 for IT equipment, $38.500 for athletics, and that's an extracurricular, a legal notice. Same as the paper that was handed out tonight for the Road and Health Project.
Actually, if you go by this list, it's number, I'm sorry, I can't...
It's number 13 on that list.
Number 13 on this list right here is what the one we're discussing right now. This was not, these were made independent of one another, I apologize for that. Yeah, we have to go by published, what was published in the paper, so. Any further discussion?
Just for purposes of discussion, I, I too feel like a Bob White, Katie Rice Street. Uh, I feel like Keith Yageloff, too. I'm gonna vote for these because I truly believe that it's needed. And I truly believe we need to spend down the fund budget. But I believe it's a pretty early warning of Budget Planning 101, so that we can eliminate $650,000, $360,000 in the future. And I take the words of our town treasurer when she said, "Do you really have a budget plan, first, or a five-year plan for your business?" So, that's all I have said. I'm gonna vote for it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed the vote. To consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education, an amount of $38,500 for athletics and extracurricular equipment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Read the number, item number four. To consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education, in the amount of $27,500 for Broadbrook Elementary School cafeteria tile. Is there a motion?
Kathy Villalure, 343 Scannick Road. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I can weigh in on that. I had, had it come before us, and I did personally go over to the Broadbrook School to take a look at that cafeteria, and, um, it, the memo that came to us with that recommendation, it said, "Original, original floor, original tiles." And, um, the school had an addition a number of years ago that was put on, which also included to expand the cafeteria, add, add more tables, and that was to the front, on the street side of the cafeteria. And, uh, when they did that, they had to put in IDs to hold up the roof where it originally was. So, when I went in there, the floor is all the same. That floor was replaced, at least when they did that. It's not the original floor. And I went through the whole cafeteria, and there's probably about a dozen tiles that the corners of about a half inch, uh, not in every tile, but the ones that are defective have, have it broken off, about quarter to a half inch. And in my opinion, that, um, the tiles at this time can simply be replaced, and, uh, which would perhaps be $1,000 as opposed to $27,000. And I know the superintendent told Andy Kaufman that, that was her biggest concern, was that cafeteria floor, the tile has a hot bunch and, and it falls on the child, and that's why it needs to be done. And, uh, can't wait. Well, if the concern is so great, that, that floor would not be done in this calendar, school calendar year. It would be done during the summer sometime. So, why wouldn't you just replace those dozen tiles, you know, with an accenting tile? You could pop out a couple other ones and put them in. I was told that it was asbestos tile. It's not asbestos tile. Asbestos tiles are made in nine-by-nine, these are 12-by-12. So, I think that to delay this to a future time would be appropriate to be proven to the town, and for probably $1,000, one day, that could be fixed this week for the students that might have difficulty in there for the balance of the school.
Discussion?
Charlie Nardell, 7 Grandview Terrace. I volunteer in that school all the time. Those are in fact nine-by-nine tiles. I even got out the ruler and measured them. Last time I was there for a PTO meeting, um, I also talked to a guy in instruction, been in instruction all his life, and he says nine-by-nine tiles almost always either are glued with asbestos or made with asbestos. And not only that, you can't just pull up one tile and replace it, because it means heating the tile up, and if there's asbestos glue under there, then you subject everybody to exposure to asbestos. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed the vote. All those in favor of the motion to consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education, in the amount of $27,500 for the Broadbrook Elementary School cafeteria tile? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Stay.
Item number five. To consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Police Department, in the amount of $56,000 for vehicles. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Probably. Second.
Exactly. Ms. Anderson, whatever.
Discussion?
Bill Lowes, Marrow Road. This is not a one-time option. They replace cruisers every year. Board of Finance only approved one cruiser this year, instead of two.
There is one bike, one vehicle in the, in the current budget that is up for referendum. Yes. Further?
It's a CIP request, as any other capital purchase is, um, all vehicles in the over $20,000 is a capital replacement.
Well, Dick Fetham, again, uh, I sit on the capital program, and I was focused a lot on, and we tried shortening the police on cruisers quite a few years ago, and a little bird come in and bit everybody where it hurts, and it cost us more for maintenance than if we bought a darn new cruiser. Um, it's scheduled for two cruisers a year, each, every other year, and a third cruiser every other year. So, it goes two, three, two, three. So, in the infinite wisdom, we put in for two and a half cruisers, so that the number will remain constant through the budget through the years. Well, you gotta cut to one, or one and a half, or something. I don't know how you're gonna buy half a cruiser. You're gonna end up short, or maintenance is gonna go out of sight. These things run 24 hours a day, the primary cruisers. They get worn out real quick. And we've done this past this week, because of this bad economy.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed the vote. All those in favor of the motion to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Police Department, in the amount of $56,000 for vehicles, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just a little...
Motion carries. Item number six. To consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Police Department, in the amount of $23,100 for computers.
So moved. Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue.
Second. Kathy Villalure, 343 Scannick Road.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor of the motion to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Police Department, in the amount of $23,100 for computers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven. To consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $60,000 for vehicles. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue.
Second. Kathy Villalure, 343 Scannick.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $60,000 for trucks, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight. To consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $20,000 for garage equipment. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Kathy, 743. We'll read this, this is the second. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $20,000 for garage equipment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine. To consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $50,000 for drainage. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Jim Martin, 108 Main Street.
Jim.
Also with...
Kathy, 743. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $50,000 for drainage, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10. To consider and approve supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $50,000 for exterior lighting. Do you have a motion?
Jim Martin, so moved.
Yes, Ms. Miller, second.
Discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve a supplemental appropriation for the Department of Public Works, in the amount of $50,000 for exterior lighting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. To consider and approve a supplemental appropriation for town properties, in the amount of $26,000 for vehicles. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Robert Leach.
Second. Discussion?
I would question, that's for town hall use or not? Because the policy was in place that if, um, the Police Department had a cruiser, they got rid of, um, they move it down to the town for their use. So, for clarifying, is it purchase of a new vehicle for town use?
During, when this is discussed at CIP, if you don't mind, Bill, may I do that? So, at CIP, we discuss putting money away such that when we were able to get a grant, so this covers not just town hall, senior house, the senior center, all of the other town, um, vehicles. So, this way, if we get a grant, we have something in CIP to do the match.
Okay, thank you. Makes sense.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve supplemental appropriation... All those in favor of the motion to approve supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars for vehicles, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, to approve a supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars for generators. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Sarah Muska.
Second?
Second.
Kathy. No. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars for generators, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, to consider and approve supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of ninety-four thousand dollars for sewers on South Road. Do you have a motion?
So moved, Paula Anderson.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of supplemental appropriation for town properties in the amount of ninety-four thousand dollars for the sewers on South Road, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm ready to motion re-adjourn.
You gotta vote for everything. Bring it higher. Okay. I gotta find what I do. I have it here somewhere.
Bill, I would make a motion.
Yes.
That we approve all of the above discussed projects for six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand and one hundred dollars.
Second? Discussion. Phil Towers, Fourty and Maple Avenue. Just be aware that this is probably the last time this is gonna happen. The charter revision committee, I've seen two members walk out of here tonight. They're gonna change the charter, so we can't do this anymore. Can't run the town with a town meeting. Just be aware that we need everybody's support from November to vote that down. Thank you.
I'm a new resident in town. I did volunteering on some of the committees. I try to be honest in my interacting with people, and try to ask people to respect what I'm doing, just like I'm respecting everybody else. I'm on the charter review commission. There's really nothing in that statement that's accurate, and I don't know what else to say about it. This town is polarized. It's one political party against the other, against the so-called third group, and that's all anybody does. And so I've been putting efforts into this charter review commission for over a year as have other volunteers in town, from all walks of life in this community. And you know something? I wish that people would be respectful enough not to make faces or shake their heads. We have a right to be here and to speak, and that's a problem we have in this town. We all have a right and a common ear to get up and just to please let people speak. You don't have to agree with me, I don't have to agree with you, but let's show some other credence, some decency and respect, please. Because folks like me that come into the town, folks like, everyone comes to town, we're just asking to be, to defer on their issues. The charter review commission is not changing anything. That's all there's to the town meeting.
We should not be discussing the charter.
Move the question, yeah.
Right, so I'm in the middle of the floor. I'm gonna sit down because somebody moved the question. I'm just asking for a little bit of respect for myself and everyone else that lives in this town. We have differences of opinion. Let's, let us speak. Let us all speak and be able to say what we have to say. I'll sit down, and everybody can move along with their opinions, and then we can just respect one another, go home as neighbors, and just live our lives in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I don't believe the motion to adjourn is debatable, but I would certainly suggest that everybody stick around because item number seven on the Board of Selectment meetings, public participation, we are very.
There's a motion on the floor, Sarah.
Yeah.
I thought there was a motion to adjourn.
No, no motion to adjourn. Any other discussion on the motion to?
No, move, move to the question.
One vote. Your second to motion for the question.
Second.
All those in favor of moving previous question, the two-thirds majority vote.
Aye.
Opposed? If you vote on the motion to approve the items combined for six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand one hundred dollars, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Will we adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm being adjourned. We haven't done it yet.
I thought you said you did already.
Well, I read your, I read your email.
Oh, you didn't do it yet? You didn't do the proclamation yet? Oh, okay. Because I got something I wanna talk about.
Okay, good. Just like. American waste USA molly.
It's all American waste, all, all American waste. All American waste. Yeah, slap, you can go slash USA molly. You got it. I'm a little jealous of Charlie, he got to turn this around. Should've stopped. I will, I will. I wanna make sure you have the B O. You wanna start more?
Okay, I'd like to start the meeting again. I'll reconvene the meeting, so please take a seat. Thank you, Dick Laborious, for taking a seat. Thank you. Joe? Okay, we're down to 10B, discussion of expansion of Economic Development Commission to five members and two alternates. Since I wrote this on the agenda, I found out the Economic Development Commission is five members and two alternates. So I think we can go right on to the next agenda item. And the next agenda item is to receive the draft charter revision report and discuss next steps. The charter revision report is in your, was in your cubbyhole if you, if you went there.
When did I get there, Bob?
Huh?
It wasn't there when I picked up this.
Probably not. This was given to the town clerk, and she stamped it yesterday.
Okay.
So, but it should be there tonight.
I'll pick it up on the way home.
Okay. And so now we've received it. What we should do is set some dates because, what the general plan now is to have a joint meeting with the Charter Revision Committee and discuss what's in this report, and ask them any questions we want. So there are some open dates on the calendar. One would be Wednesday, May twenty-second. Would you consider having a meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-second in the evening?
That's, what date is that?
That's a Wednesday, May twenty-second. How about you, Charles?
Next week?
Steve?
Whatever you guys wanna do.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. So over the weekend, or when you get a chance, read through this.
What time?
What time you want.
Whatever you guys want.
About six?
Six? Okay.
Steve, can you do six? I know you got here, but you're doing anything you want.
Then I think the next big thing after that would be to have a public hearing. It's required, and I'll read, I'll read to you what the state statute says, but I would suggest we have the public hearing on June sixth, which would be our next Board of Selectment meeting. Probably take up most of the meeting to have a public hearing on the charter, but I'm thinking at that time, we will have, we will be discussing our version of the charter and see what people think about. So I might take some out, we might put something in.
I, I think it would be better to hold it on a night other than the regular meeting. It's just gonna go on and on.
Okay, because, yeah, okay. Let's take a look at the.
Want to do that?
Hi.
May thirtieth?
May thirtieth.
Get an early start?
Yeah, that's all right. That's all right. Okay, good.
Excuse me, may I just ask?
Sure.
If you could.
Yes. Okay, and then I'll just read what it says in, in the state statutes. It's seven dash one, seven dash one-nine-one. Says, "The commission shall submit a draft report," and that's what they've done, "including proposed charter, charter amendments or home rule ordinance amendments to the town clerk of the municipality," which they did yesterday, "who shall transmit the such report to the appointing authority," that's us. "The appointing authority shall hold at least one public hearing on that draft report and shall hold its last hearing, not forty-five days after the submission of the draft report to such a, to such clerk. No later than fifteen days after its last hearing, the appointed authority shall make recommendations to the commission for changes in the draft report as deemed desirable." And then it goes on about how, what the commission should do and how we should proceed after that, but that's, that's what we're about, is to make the changes and give it back to the commission. So any questions or discussion? Now, is Lenny here? This is, as we, we know that, that May nineteenth through twenty-first is National Public Works Week, and so I'd like to approve our proclamation acknowledging the Public Works Week as May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen. And I'll read the proclamation, and then somebody can make a motion, or I'll make a motion. So proclamation, "Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of the citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts of skill and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, and whereas pursuant to Homeland Security Presidential Directive, public works employees are designated first responders responsible for protection of life, property, and the environment, and whereas the public works departments from across New England are participating in the second Philly public truck food drive for support of local food banks. Now therefore, I, Robert Maynard, first elected of the town of East Windsor, do hereby proclaim the week, May nineteenth through twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen, as National Public Works Week. In the town of East Windsor, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with these issues that involve... themselves with these issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, given under my hand and the seal of the town of East Windsor, Connecticut, this day, 16th day of May 2019. And that's our proclamation. So, I approve, I move we approve the proclamation acknowledging the National Public Works Week for May 19th through 25th of 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Lenny, you wanted to say something?
Yes. For the second year, we are participating in the Philly Public Works Charter. Last year, we were at Walmart, we collected approximately 500 pounds of food. This year, on Wednesday, May 22nd, we're going to be outside of Geisler's from 9 until 2, and we'll have a truck parked there, maybe two. And we've also sent flyers to each of the schools. We're going to have bins at each of the schools. The flyers are going to go home with the students. We're going to have a bin in each of the town buildings. We've got these same flyers out, out in the vestibule. As you can see, we're going to benefit both the Five Corner Cupboard and the East Windsor Power Pack program, kind of helped Melissa out a little bit too with the food and provision she sends home to the students. I just, you know, we do more than just, you see us on the side of the road sometimes, and the boys really are out there taking life and limb in their own hands sometimes the way people drive, but just to let you know, we participate in this for the second year and...
That's a good thing, Lenny.
Everything.
How many pounds of food or how do you measure? Cans or...
Well, we bring it, we get it measured. They weigh it.
And how much?
Well, last year, we got, we've only, this is only the second year, last year, we got about 500 pounds for East Windsor. You know, some towns do. Walmart was okay. Wasn't a great adventure. I'm hoping to do better at Geisler's down in the center around us.
Have you given any of these to, I'm trying to think of her name, that is responsible for Scott Hall, since they have so many events going on there?
I don't know if you've given any to Scott Hall. We could have some distributed. Good thinking.
Good idea to do that, because they got somebody, kids, people there every time.
Nancy Masters?
Yeah, yeah. Couldn't think of the name for a second. That might be another outlet to distribute it to.
We look forward to everybody either here at the town hall or at our truck on Wednesday. The bins will be here all week, and at the schools, we'll put everything on on Monday. So, hope everybody contributes.
Yeah, well, thank you for everything you do all year long. We have to always honor you guys.
We try.
Yeah.
Really do.
On the road.
Sometimes we're the forgotten people, you know? Till it snows, bird is a problem. Thank you.
Okay. We'll approve the tax refund. Is there a motion for that?
Now, make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $30.30.
You know, I'm going to go back. I don't think we voted for this proclamation, so all those in favor. All right. Now, okay, now, I'll entertain your motion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $30.30.
Second?
Seven.
All those in favor? Okay. Selecting reports, Andy?
The next meeting of the EDC is May 20th, which is next Monday. Bob and I continue to work on the EDC website. He recently met with a drone flyer who takes photographs of landscapes in town and important buildings and so on. We'd like to incorporate that type feature into the website. When I was looking at other websites, I looked at the town of Windsor, they have a really nice one, and it opens up with a drone, obviously, that pans over the Voya Office Building in their industrial, in their industrial park, corporate park. It really is a neat thing, and then it pans back out again and it kind of flies up the main, the main street, the main thoroughfare. I hope that we can come up with something like that. As I said before, I think that our website to be effective has to be a lot of pictures and videos and not a lot of reading. Today, people are getting impatient with, because the media is so good at telling us what we should, they think we should think, that we better, in our best interest, have something like that. In addition to that, we're going to meet with Jim Burke, who is a director of economic development over in Windsor. He's been immensely successful in getting a lot of high-end, large taxpaying companies into the town of Windsor. He met with me four or five years ago when I was in the Economic Development Commission and did a survey of town businesses, and as part of that, I also did a quick run through South Windsor, Windsor, and Enfield, talking to their economic development professionals. At that time, as I've told you, I think, before, they urged the town of East Windsor, if we want to be competitive, that we should hire an economic development director. I still believe that vehemently. The good part of having an effective economic development program in a town is you have to have people, a person who knows where to go, and a people who are influential in the, in the business of placing companies within the state of Connecticut. Burke is one of them. He has been very successful over there, and I hope that Bob and Ruben and myself are going to go over. Ruben is kind of our pseudo-economic development director in our town. He's energetic. He has a bent for economic development, and, but he doesn't really know the Connecticut game. I spent time talking to him, and I think that a conversation with Burke for him primarily would be a good thing. The people in South Windsor and in Windsor have always told, have told me repeatedly that you must know the right people, the right organizations, to get businesses in your town, and they have also said that East Windsor will never be competition for their towns until we hire somebody like that. For future reference, we're talking something like an 80K, they thought an 80K, starting wage for that person with benefits, that's like a hundred thousand dollars. If you look at that, if that person, if that economic development professional brings in $3 million worth of taxable assets to the town, they have paid their salary. If you look at, in South Windsor, they have a new Coca-Cola facility being built down on Route 30. I've been told by a friend of mine who's on the planning and zoning in South Windsor, that that's an $80 million facility. I don't know if that's a real number or not, but that would bring in $1.9 million in taxes after the, after the period of time when rebates are in effect and so on. If you look at Sardelli as an example, once they start paying a full boatload, they're going to pay like $600,000. That would go a long way in helping to solve our problem of having submitted a budget, which gets rejected three times, and I really hope that the town takes this position seriously and someday finds a way of affluening it. It is an absolute necessity in my mind.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, I meant to mention at our previous meeting, a little commentary about the major fire that was in Barbeville Road in my neighborhood a couple, three weeks ago, and I saw the fire and I went over there, and there were no police or fire, anybody, when I got there, but they did come shortly after that. And I have to say that I was so impressed with how they responded to this and how they all worked together. The police went right in there first to see if anybody was trapped or not out, and they made account of everybody, and the fire departments, Rod Brook, Chief Arcari, and Chief Barton in Warehouse Point, they were so phenomenal that the coordination, how all that worked just really, really impressed me, that there were no gaps, there was no discussion, they just knew how to place those things and how quickly they could move the water, and to say that the Talon County Dispatch, how good that works, because they got all those tankers there because there was not enough water pressure, and they got them from the closest, so they do all of that, where the fire chiefs don't have to do that, once they tell them what they need. So, and looking at that, as I said, the training that they go through, that's where you see it pay off, and the house was not saved, but that was not possible before they got there. But in any event, the work that they did was, should be commended, from the police, right down through to the fire departments. I know there was a lady that had her car kind of entangled in some hoses that she had parked there before the fire, and the police officer offered her a ride home. She lived up on the other road there and brought her home, because she wasn't getting out of there that night. So, you know, it just good public spirit there and working with people, and no one got excited, but they did work hard to do what they did. So, I think they should be commended for that event.
Okay. And I'll just report that I did attend a grand opening at Lincoln Tech for Veterans Oasis that they opened up, and it's very interesting. I didn't know what a Veterans Oasis was, and I Googled it, and it was Manchester Community College has one, and it's a room for veterans, and they can get together, and a lot of things were donated to this room. It really was well furnished, and they can have bulletin boards and really communicate among themselves, and also at that grand opening, like the Commissioner of Veterans Affairs from the state of Connecticut was there and spoke very well, and a lot of students, I was surprised with the number, and maybe you can, Bob Lyke was there too, and he spoke because he's the East Windsor Veterans Representative, so it was very impressive. I was impressed with the school, first time I'd been in Lincoln Tech, and a lot of students there, and in the auditorium, probably, I'm going to guess, 40 veterans were there, young people and some older. So, it was a very, very good experience, and that's a very good school we have up there.
Bob?
Yes. Just forgot you.
All right, I want to talk about, I don't have anything to report, but I have comments. This vote we just had on the budget, as everybody knows, held when? I call them special interest groups, lost by 300 votes. Okay, everybody got a chance to vote. Everybody got a chance to put their signs on. Kind of spinning off a little bit, what Mr. Yovalov said about getting to along with each other here and this and that. I'm going to be like Fox News. I'm going to be fair and balanced, okay? This is what the special interest group went around and did, okay? They had to go out, take an $8 sign to face it, because they were concerned they were going to lose, and they did. When you do that to somebody's sign that has a different belief than you, the people get it, all right? All you do is you hurt yourself by doing this. You're out there in the middle of the night, playing these games, not the way it should be. Everybody gets to vote, everybody's got their opinion. These signs were bought by me, all right? And the reason I oppose it is because I don't think the schools should get another million and a half dollars after they just got 200,000, and then you're in here tonight getting more. It's disgrace what the school system does to the people of East Windsor, okay? But to go around and mess around with people's signs, I had a bunch stolen also, they were taken down, all right? They were taken down. You don't do that. All right, I have a word I'd like to use, but I'm not going to use it here tonight. It's not a swear word, but I would suggest it not to use it. But you special interest people know who you are. You leave my signs alone. You leave them alone. You find out who's taking them, you're going to be arrested, all right? And because I'm fair and balanced, something threw this on my lawn. One of the special interest group's signs says yes to support East Windsor. Says nothing about a budget, vote. Doesn't say what you're supporting. All the special interests wanted was a yes vote, so they could get that money to support their special interest. That's what that sign means. This sign here lies to the people of East Windsor. It doesn't say what is going on. My signs say exactly what's going on. This was a trick sign to make you feel good that you're going to take care of your East Windsor, your nice town. I love East Windsor, but I don't like this bullshit. So, you special interest people, you cut it out and play fair. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And on that note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some will adjourn.
Actually, we'll go into special session. Executive session.